The order, start with the pledge of allegiance followed by invocation by the chairman.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, as we gather today to do the county's work, give us strength and wisdom and courage to do the right things for the right reasons for all the people. In your name we pray, amen.
Since we have such a long agenda, we'll bypass any chair comments today. Moving to the consent agenda, commissioners, we need to remove the minutes from the consent agendas, so a motion?
So moved.
Moved and seconded to remove the review of approval of minutes from the consent agenda, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries, now consent agenda motion, please.
So moved, Mr. Chairman, second.
Moved and seconded to approve the remainder of the consent agenda, without further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. This morning, have an opportunity for members of the public to address the board, Madam Clerk, we have one person?
Yes, sir, Mr. Bob Kreitzer.
Sir? Please announce for the viewing public, they may forgot that you were commissioner.
Good morning, my name is Bob Kreitzer, I'm here on behalf of the Western Kansas Career Showcase's quick update. It's now the start of the school year, we're ready to go again. Last year, we had eight showcases throughout the region. This year, we've moved, we've added an additional one here in Garden City. It's a building trades only, and it'll be highlighted by the construction project of the county for their EMS health department facility. They will be hosting at Hutton Construction and Davis Electric and Tetrile Plumbing, who are all contractors on that job. In addition, we've added three additional showcases in northwest Kansas. There will be one in Oakley, one in Waukeganee, and one in Goodland, stressing that there's still that need to keep everybody west as many as we can. And finally, we have added, in cooperation with Garden City Community College, an additional showcase here to focus on their STEM facility. And it will invite high school students as well as community members or any people that are working in the community that are interested in STEM, doing some continuing education, as well as the student population there at the college. We're very excited about it, it's gonna be a very, very busy year, hectic year, but we think it'll be a good one. And once again, we thank you because without Finney County and your generosity of getting us started, we would not be anywhere near where we are today, so thank you.
Any questions for Bob? Alright, thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Anyone here gathered wish to address the commission? Hearing none, we'll proceed to the business items. This morning, we have a public hearing set for the creation of sewer district number four, and we need to open that for a public hearing, and then we'll have the administrator address the issues.
You in motion?
Yes, sir.
I so move.
Second.
They've been seconded to conduct a public hearing on the purpose of resolution twenty-three dash twenty-two-five, creation of Finney County Sewer District number four. We'll first begin by Mr. Meeger addressing the commission with the proposed regulation and discussion of the concept of sewer district number four, sir.
Good morning, Commissioners, Gary Meeger, interim county administrator. On June twenty-fifth, a petition was received that was signed by more than fifty-one percent of the owners of land in the area of sewer district number four, the proposed district, sewer district number four. On August fourth, the county commission set a public hearing date for September second or today to create sewer district number four. And a notice of public hearing was sent to all property owners and also published in the Garden City telegram. The resolution that, for you to consider, is resolution twenty-three dash twenty-two-five, which is a resolution creating the district, making certain, authorizing and making certain public improvements and setting forth the general nature of the improvement and the estimated cost. This particular resolution does, you know, address the notice and public hearing portion of this. It also provides a description of the district, and perhaps if we could have a map of the district, that would, might be helpful for everyone to see. Then there is also the nature of the improvement, typically when a district is formed, there's a public improvement that's associated with that. In this particular case, it was the construction and installation of a new pump station, which was done earlier this year, completed earlier this year. The estimated cost of that particular project was four hundred and eight thousand, eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars, and that was to be assessed based on, on per square footage of the lots. However, because the actual improvement was paid for by ARPA funds, there will be no assessment for that particular project. And so for twenty-twenty-six, there are no assessments for this particular district. However, in the future, as capital projects become, become a need, then there can be assessments that would pay for, you know, additional improvements. We don't anticipate any improvements that are going to be necessary for the next few years. However, that's why it's gonna be important to develop a capital improvement plan to anticipate those improvements that will be needed later on for this particular district. But it'll only be for that district, so, and so the, today is an opportunity for a public hearing, and then you'll need to consider the adoption of resolution twenty-three twenty-five, or, you know, adopt it or approve it as written, or approve it with modifications, or provide further direction to staff. So I'll let the public have an opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone, this is a public hearing on the advisability of creating sewer district number four. Does anyone wish to address the district with regard to, or the commission with regard to the creation of this district? Sir?
My name is Bob Kreitzer, and as a former owner of a couple of parcels up there, when that map, can we have the map back again, please? On that map, basically, all of the pink is, or to me, pink, they're occupied at this point in time, we have a whole bunch of yellow. And there is no infrastructure from the sewer district to serve any of that yellow. And so as you're starting this, is there any provision for additional people to join? Would they have to pay for all of that extension of the sewer system to those areas? Or are they gonna be allowed to join, or how is that gonna be handled?
Direct that back to the administrator.
So in this particular district, all the people that are in the district, the colored areas, there are three colored areas, as was, was mentioned. And in, in that particular district, everyone will be allowed to connect. The lines will have to be extended to those properties, and that'll be then assessed back to the, the owners of the properties, the costs of.
To all of the owners or the new owners?
The, the way I think it's been done in the past is, is, as, as this is built out, that will be part of, you know, the owners will have to, that are affected, they'll be paying for that portion of it.
I'm gonna ask one of the owners, is that the new owners or the existing owners?
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I didn't understand your question. The, the new owners would, would pay for the, the extension to their properties. But the overall, for example, if there'd have to be upgrades to the lift station and all that, that would be the, that would be where the, the entire group would pay for it.
Very good, thank you very much. Sure, please announce your name for the viewing public.
Yep, I'm Rob Kreitzer, and I own Garden City RV Park. Mr. Meeger had said earlier in the, the idea thoughts, or if there would have been fees impacted with the lift station originally, or cost impact, that it would have been done by square foot. I guess we had, what I would ask, long-term, would, now that we, everybody would be on water meters, is that it would be done based on water usage. I look at the, the square footage of Maverick Store, for example, or TA Truck Stop, for example, or if there's a truck wash that comes in, the amount of water they use versus the water, amount of water we use would be significantly different. And I'm looking at that map again, our square footage is similar to Maverick, but the water usage would be significantly different, so I think that would be a, maybe a more cost-effective way of settling those fee disputes.
Rob, can I ask you a question, and would you return to the microphone? Is your concern about wastewater treatment charge, or is it about capital improvement charges?
Capital improvement charge.
We are setting capital improvement charges based on square footage.
Okay.
The actual charge for the use of the facility, this is a flow-through through to the city, and the city will be charging wastewater treatment services provided by usage.
Okay.
Might ask Mackenzie.
Very well.
Mackenzie Phillips to address some of those questions, too, since she's worked, she actually works with the district.
Yes, Mackenzie Phillips, Development Administrative Coordinator. Chairman Schultz, part of what you said was correct, yes, the capital improvement is per square footage. So the user charges, there's a user fee for being connected to the county system that goes towards us maintaining the system. On top of that, there's also a charge for the treatment that the city charges. So the cost, the, the city, or the county user fee is determined on their water usage from the prior year.
Very well, anybody have any questions? Thank you, Mackenzie. The viewing public have any other comments with regard to the creation of the sewer district? While we're still in public session, then, do we adopt the resolution, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir.
Alright. It has been held for a public hearing to approve resolution, let me get the number correct.
Twenty.
Twenty-three dash twenty-two-five, creating a sewer district, sewer district number four, according to that which has been published and proposed here today. Is there a motion to approve a resolution twenty-three dash twenty-five?
So moved, second.
Moved and seconded to approve resolution twenty-three dash twenty-five. Mr. Meeger, is there anything else we need to consider?
Yes, sir, the next, the next resolution is a, upon creation of the, of the sewer district, then is to set the, the sewer fees and allow for the adoption of rules and regulations for the sewer district.
We do that right after we pass this motion?
Yes.
Alright, we'll do this by rule call, vote. Any further discussion on the pending motion? Commissioner Oates?
Aye.
Commissioner Basquim?
Aye.
Commissioner German?
Aye.
Commissioner Jones?
Aye.
Chairman, aye. Resolution passes, it has been adopted, let's turn to the rules and regulations, sir.
Okay, thank you. Resolution twenty-four twenty-five sets the fees for the sewer district number four and provides for the adoption of rules and regulations from time to time. The fees that are being considered here are the same ones that Mackenzie Phillips recently addressed. As, again, the user fees are designed to cover operational costs, whereas any assessments would be, be designed to cover capital costs that need to be done. So the user fees that are being considered in this particular resolution are the same ones that were adopted in March of this year. Earlier this year, you, you adopted fees for the northwest industrial district. And those, those fees have been in place since March. At this point, none of the users actually have been billed because of, you know, we're trying to get this district created, and then also determining things such as high-strength waste and various things. We were not yet billed early on at the city, from the city on, on these, on this particular district. However, over the last few months, that has, has occurred. So the fees that are being set here are established and set forth in the back of the resolution based on their, their water usage, and, and then we have, we will bill the high-strength waste based on how much we are billed from the city, will, that will be a pass-through for those that have high-strength waste. But again, this does allow for the, adopting the fees and also allowing to us to have, or allowing the county to have rules and regulations for the, for the district, which we will consider in the next, in the next action. So the, the alternates are to approve the resolution twenty-two-four as, as written, to approve twenty-two-four with, with modifications or reject resolution twenty-two, or twenty-four twenty-two-five, and provide further direction.
Questions for the commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to request that the fee schedule be put up on the screen for the viewing public, please. Appears to me those are more than reasonable.
Any other discussion or questions for the administrator? I hope everyone understands that these fees are in addition to what the city charges in the flow-through part of the equation. That's what I want to make sure the viewing public is aware of. Plus doesn't stand out.
Good point.
It's one that we all need to make sure that we're aware of.
Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to make a motion.
To approve resolution twenty-four dash twenty-five as, as presented?
I would move that we adopt resolution twenty, resolution twenty-four dash twenty-two-five.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve this resolution twenty-four dash twenty-two-five as presented, is there any further discussion? We will hold the vote if there is more public comment on this part of the resolution.
The only question I have is, how is this fee structure set with the city? Is it the same fees as sewer district, as previous sewer districts, one, two, and three?
Okay, I'll let the staff analyze that.
Commissioners, that is correct, it'll be the same, same fees as the other, that the city charges for this particular sewer district will be the same as the others.
Right, and this is what we adopted in March?
Yes.
Thank you. There's no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Okay, Commissioners, with regard to the next item, upon the creation of the district and, and establishing the, the fee structure and, and allowing for the adoption of the rules and regulations, you do have a copy of the rules and regulations provided that addresses such things as the use of the public sewer system, permits, pre-treatment requirements, and then inspection, and the types of charges that would be identified as high-strength waste. Those are all contained in the, in the document that you have before you. So the, the alternatives would be to approve the proposed sewer district four rules and regulations, to approve them with revisions, or to reject them and provide further direction. These are in line with other districts.
Are these rules and regulations the same as for the other three districts?
That's my understanding. Sewer district one.
Same as sewer district one?
Any other questions? Alright. Kind of lengthy, but at the same time, they're the same, what we approved before for other sewer districts. Other sewer districts within the county have different lay of the land, so to speak. This is an area that we have developed and would like to get going. So with that in mind, is there a motion to approve the sewer district four rules and regulations?
I so move, second.
Been moved and seconded to approve these regulations, before we take a vote, is there anyone here in the public that wishes to comment? Or, as we are still in a public hearing on sewer district number four? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Is there a motion to close the public hearing on sewer district number four?
So moved, second.
Seconded to close the public hearing, hearing no further comments, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, now we'll move on to our agenda items. It is not yet time to take up the net revenue neutral, so is there?
We can move on to the Platts, I think those would be.
That was where we should go?
I believe so.
Alright, let's, are you recommending that we go down to the Diaz Acres Edition?
Yes.
Let's do that, fill up our time while we wait till the appointed time for our net revenue neutral hearing.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners, Mackenzie Phillips, Development Administrative Coordinator. This morning, you were asked to consider and approve the Diaz Acres Edition parcel plot. Dwayne Palmberg with Palmberg Land Surveying Services, on behalf of the property owner Alejandro Diaz, is requesting to plot the Diaz Acres Edition, generally located at sixty-eight fifty Lyle Road. The plot includes two lots, lot one is proposed to be approximately three acres, and lot two is approximately two-point-seven-six acres. Both are currently vacant, but lot two, they do plan on building a, a structure on that lot. Lot two is located within Zone A of the special flood hazard area, which requires any new building constructed to comply with the flood plain regulations. The property is currently zoned RR Rural Residential District, and any building permits must be submitted and approved before any building can be placed on the properties. A review of the second submittal was conducted on August fourth, twenty-twenty-five, and found to meet the minimum requirements of the Finney County subdivision and zoning regulations. And the planning commission recommended approval of the parcel plot on August twenty-first, twenty-twenty-five. You have two alternatives before you this morning. First, the Board of County Commissioners may approve the parcel plot, or the, the Board of County Commissioners may not approve the parcel plot, and staff recommends alternative one.
Mackenzie, the hearing that you had before the planning commission, that vote to approve this plot was unanimous?
It was unanimous.
Mackenzie, that, that is in the flood plain?
It is, yes, it is. It's because of the ditch that's just there to the south. This is based off of the, the two thousand nine, so it's not the official FEMA adopted flood zone, but it's the best available data that we have that we gauge on. So it's a possibility that when we get the new maps, which they're going through the process right now, it might be in the flood plain, the official FEMA flood plain.
That ditch that hasn't had water in.
Other questions for Mackenzie?
Ready for a motion, sir? I would move that we approve FC twenty-two-five dash twenty-eight, the Diaz Acres Edition parcel plot.
Second.
Articulate motion and second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Let's go ahead and do the next parcel plot, we got time.
Okay. The Board of County Commissioners is asked to consider and approve the. The Board of County Commissioners is asked to consider and approve the Johnson Rental Edition parcel plot. Dwayne Palmberg with Palmberg Land Surveying Services on behalf of the property owners, Stuart and Martina Johnson, is requesting to plot the Johnson Rental Edition. The property is generally located at 1525 Upland Road and is zoned MR medium-density residential. The parcel plot contains one lot that is approximately 19.88 acres. There are currently 24 multifamily residential buildings on the property. The owner intends to plot this portion of the property to sell off the apartment complex area separate from the vacant land to the east. A review of the second submittal was conducted on August 10th, 2025, and was found to meet the minimum Fannie County subdivision and zoning regulations, and the planning commission recommended approval of the parcel plot on August 21st, 2025. The alternatives before you this morning are the Board of County Commissioners may approve the parcel plot, or the Board of County Commissioners may not approve the parcel plot, and staff recommends alternative one.
Questions? Hearing none. Madam Vice Chairman?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve FC 2025-25 Johnson Rental Edition parcel plot.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve this parcel plot as presented. Is there further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
We have a little bit of time before the nine o'clock scheduled hearing time. Is the Health Department here? Let's take up the Health Department staff retreat, please.
A little short for this.
Right down there where you can get it, Madam Nurse.
My name is Dana. I'm the interim Health Department Director, and we're here requesting closure for two days for an employee retreat. This would be our second annual employee retreat. It's, any questions for us?
Eighteenth and nineteenth, correct?
Correct. September 18th and 19th.
And when will you have the employees of the Health Department? Last year, I spoke at that gathering, is why I'm getting around to...
Yes. We have, I have Hector here who's been on the planning committee. We have some tentative speakers. We're in the process of finalizing all of the speakers, and of course, some of the Commissioners will be invited pending approval.
Commissioners, you have any other questions? Well, I think that it's a wonderful time to be a worker in the Fannie County Health Department with the opportunity of a new facility. It's under construction right now, under the guidance of Senior Chairman Jones, and that building is coming along nicely, and is there a motion to approve closing the Health Department for the 18th and 19th to meet this continuing health retreat?
So move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the Health Department retreat on September 18th and 19th, closure of the department for those two days. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, in strict compliance with the net revenue neutral statute and our friends in Topeka requiring a public hearing on this issue, is there a motion to conduct a public hearing to receive comments with regard to the net revenue neutral issue?
I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to conduct a public hearing on the issue of net revenue neutral. Is there any further discussion other than the Chair's comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We'll conduct a public hearing. Mr. Administrator?
Good morning again, Commissioners. Gary Meeger, interim county administrator. The Board of County Commissioners is asked to conduct a public hearing to receive comments from the public regarding the intent to levy a property tax exceeding the revenue neutral rate and the proposed 2026 county budget. Pursuant to KSA 79-2988, the Board of County Commissioners will hold a hearing to hear questions, concerns, and comments from the public relating to the proposed levy of a property tax rate that exceeds the revenue neutral rate and the adoption of the 2026 budget. Following the hearing, the governing body will be asked to consider and approve a resolution to levy a property tax rate exceeding the revenue neutral rate. So, we need to conduct a public hearing for exceedance of the revenue neutral rate and the adoption of the 2026 budget, consider the adoption of Resolution 2025, or I'm sorry, Resolution 25-2025 to levy a property tax exceeding the revenue neutral rate. At the July 14th, 2025 special session, the Board of County Commissioners authorized their intent to exceed the revenue neutral rate as calculated by the county clerk. The 2026 budget was approved for publication at the July 14th, 2025 special session with a 47.370 mil rate. The revenue neutral rate for 2026 is 45.99. This resolution formally acknowledges that the county is exceeding the revenue neutral rate, and so the alternatives would be for you to consider during the hearing is adoption of Resolution 25-2025 to levy a property rate exceeding the net revenue neutral rate, and that resolution must be adopted by a roll call vote, or to decline the adoption of Resolution 25-2025 and reduce the county's mil levy to the revenue neutral rate. The recommendation would be to go with alternative one to approve the Resolution 25-2025.
Questions for the Administrator? Hearing none? Then we'll ask, is there anyone here that wishes to address the commission with regard to the single issue of the county exceeding its net revenue neutral rate? Let the record reflect that no one appeared, and no one provided any comments. During the public hearing, it is incumbent upon this group to adopt the resolution to exceed the net revenue neutral rate during the public hearing. Is that correct, Madam Clerk?
That is correct.
All right. Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 25-2025 as presented, exceeding the net revenue neutral rate as presented?
Mr. Chairman, I will make the motion that we adopt 25-2025 to exceed the revenue neutral rate.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve 25-2025 exceeding the net revenue neutral rate as presented. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor say, oh, well, hold on, can't do that. Roll call vote. Commissioner Oates?
Aye.
Commissioner Baskey?
Aye.
Commissioner German?
Aye.
Commissioner Jones?
Aye.
Chairman, aye. Motion carries. Everybody miss one? Commissioner Oates, when you start signing one of these, would you sign both pages so that we all follow?
It's like the lemmings.
It's a test, make sure the board's awake.
The last lemming's going, whoa, whoa, whoa.
Madam Clerk, do we close the net revenue hearing now?
I believe so.
All right. Is there a motion to close the net revenue neutral hearing?
So move. Second.
Without discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now that we have conformed to the whims of Topeka, we'll continue with our budget. Sir?
The next item is, the Board of County Commissioners is asked to consider and adopt the 2026 budget for Fannie County. The budget certificate which you have before you summarizes the maximum levy of property tax for specific funds and the maximum expenditure for all funds of the county's budget. The proposed budget also includes funding for outside agencies as outlined in the schedule that you have before you. The 2026 budget certificate was prepared using the notice of hearing for the 2026 budget expenditures. Prior to approving the budget certificate, the governing body considered Resolution 25-2025 to exceed the revenue neutral rate. This allows the county to levy a property tax of 47.370 mils that will generate approximately The alternatives are to adopt the Fannie County 2026 budget as presented with a mil levy rate of 47.370 mils and the maximum expenditures of $68,595,421, or to adopt the 2026 budget that differs from the one that is presented. However, state statutes prohibit changes that would raise the county's total mil levy above the amount published in the notice of public hearing. The recommendation would be to adopt the 2026 budget as presented with a mil levy rate of 47.370 mils, the maximum expenditures of $68,595,421.
Questions for the Administrator? Motion to approve the budget?
So move. That we adopt alternative number one. Fannie County 2026 budget is presented with a mil levy rate of 47.370 and maximum expenditures of $68,595,421.
I'll second.
Commissioner Oates has a second with the consent of Vice Chairman German, I'm sure. Is there any further discussion on the budget this year? Yes.
I don't know if you want to request for public comment again?
We can. Is it required?
Well, the first hearing was for revenue neutral. Is this for adoption of the budget?
This is...
You can hold those together, but I don't know if it was clear initially.
We closed the public hearing with regard to net revenue neutral?
Yes.
All right. Well, what we'll do, Mr. Meeger, step down, and we will ask the public if there's any comments with regard to the proposed budget for next year on the idea and consideration of the clerk, to give everyone an opportunity to address the commission with regard to this budget. If you're going to address the commission, please state your name.
My name is Brittany Martin, and I just have one question about, what is the opioid settlement? I was looking at the 2026 budget and just seeing that last year it was, or this current year was 18,625, and then the proposed was 580,000, and I was just curious what that was and why it was, why so much was going to be allocated differently this year, or for the upcoming year.
All right. I'll direct that back to the Administrator, and I don't know if the Health Department people are here to answer your question. Sir?
Yes, Commissioners. The opioid settlement is money that's received from settlements regarding some of the lawsuits that have been filed by various states, cities, counties against the various drug manufacturers that produced certain opioid treatments or medications. Those, that's something, it's a nationwide program, and what happens is those drug companies then, once these lawsuits are settled, provide money back to various states, local governments to help to fund some of the programs, opioid programs for addiction and various things. And so, that money is very specific in how it can be used. The reason that probably it is, has increased so much is we never know from year to year what, how much money is going to come in. And typically, local governments budget the maximum amount they expect to receive. Now, if we don't receive 500,000, we won't spend that because we don't have the money. But if we don't budget higher than what we anticipate, if we do get a large settlement that comes in, we wouldn't be able to spend it to, because we're held to a certain maximum, whatever we budget. So, it doesn't mean that we're going to be spending, I mean, we may spend more money in 2026 than in 2025. However, it's all based on how much money that we receive. And again, that money goes to drug treatment programs and various programs like that to deal with opioid addiction.
Questions from the Commissioners?
Well, I would like to point out that that is a budget authority, so that gives us authority to spend.
Okay.
Things that, or monies that we would receive. It's not necessarily anything being levied against taxpayers.
Right, yeah.
It just gives us the authority to spend what we receive.
And it's all money that would come in from the lawsuits, has nothing to do with property taxes or any taxes associated on the public.
Commissioners, you have questions? Yeah, what, any funds that are received from those companies that we would receive in 2026, what organizations would be utilizing those funds?
Off the top of my head...
There's an opioid task force that's made up of, I believe, the Health Department, EMS, and Livwell Fannie County, various organizations.
So, it's just for like treatment and education type?
Yeah, I guess we would have to define the program for them.
So, we have a task force that kind of determines how that money would be allocated... So we have a task force that kind of determines how that money would be allocated out, and obviously, you all approve that ultimately.
Thank you.
That was an excellent question, by the way.
Anything else?
I don't have anything.
You can step down.
Okay.
Any other person wish to address the commission with regard to the proposed 2026 budget as presented? It's been moved and seconded, and if there's not any further public discussion or other discussion from the commission, we'll do this one then by roll call vote. Commissioner Oates?
Aye.
Commissioner Baskey?
Aye.
Commissioner German?
Aye.
Commissioner Jones?
Aye.
Chair, aye. Motion carries. That's our budget. All right, we're going into sewer districts, and, Madam Clerk, I have a general question. I don't believe any of the sewer districts are exceeding net revenue neutral. Is that correct?
That's correct. So you will just hold a regular budget hearing and adopt the budget?
All right. Do you want to do all three of these together, or do you want to do them separately?
They'll need to be separate.
All right. Let's convene for the purposes of hearing the budget for sewer district number one. Mr. Meeger?
Okay. The Board of County Commissioners is asked to consider and adopt the 2026 budget for Eastside Sewer District Number One. The budget certificate summarizes the maximum levy for the property tax for specific funds and maximum expenditures for all funds of the district's budget. So this will be to conduct a hearing to hear questions and concerns and comments from the public related to the proposed 2026 budget and to consider and adopt the 2026 budget. The 2026 budget certificate was prepared using the notice of hearing for the 2026 budget expenditures. Eastside Sewer District One will not exceed the revenue neutral rate of two point five three four. The alternatives are to conduct the Eastside Sewer District Number One 2026 budget as presented with the mill levy rate of two point five three three with maximum expenditures of two hundred and twenty-three thousand, two hundred forty-five dollars. The other alternative would be to adopt the budget that differs from the one presented. However, the state statutes prohibit changes that would raise the district's mill levy above the amount published in the notice of public hearing. The recommendation is to adopt alternative one, to adopt the budget as presented with the mill levy rate of two point five three three and a maximum expenditures of two hundred twenty-three thousand, two hundred forty-five dollars.
Once again, I think we'll go ahead and let the public have an opportunity to address the commission. Do you first want to make a motion, and then we'll hear from the public?
I would move that we adopt the Eastside Sewer District Number One 2026 budget as presented with a mill levy rate of two point five three three and maximum expenditures of two hundred twenty-three thousand, two hundred forty-five dollars.
Second.
Is anyone here wishes to address the commission with regard to sewer district number one on the budget for 2026? Hearing none, then commissioners, any further discussion? We'll do it by roll call since it's a budget. Commissioner Oates?
Aye.
Commissioner Baskey?
Aye.
Commissioner German?
Aye.
Commissioner Jones?
Aye.
Chair, aye. Motion carries. Continue, Mr. Meeger.
Okay, the next item is sewer district number two, public hearing. The Board of County Commissioners is asked to consider and adopt the 2026 budget of, for the sewer district number two. The budget certificate summarizes the maximum levy for the property tax for specific funds and the maximum expenditures for all funds of the district's budget. So this is to conduct a hearing to hear questions, concerns, and comments from the public related to proposed 2026 budget. Consider and adopt the 2026 budget. The 2026 budget certificate was prepared using the notice of public hearing for the 2026 budget expenditures. The sewer district number two will not exceed the revenue neutral rate of three point one four nine mils. So the alternatives would be to adopt sewer district number two, 2026 budget as presented with a mill levy rate of three point one four nine mils and a maximum expenditures of sixty-eight thousand, seven hundred eighty-one dollars. The other alternative would be to adopt the sewer district budget that differs from the one presented. However, Kansas state statutes prohibit changes that would raise the mill levy, the district's mill levy above the amount published in the public, the notice of public hearing. Recommendation would be to adopt alternative one.
Motion to approve sewer district budget, sewer district number two, 2026 budget.
I would so move that we adopt alternative one.
Please, there a second?
Second.
Second to adopt sewer district number two, 2026 budget as presented with a mill levy rate of three point one four nine and a maximum expenditure of sixty-eight, comma, seven eighty-one. Since we are allowing the public to address the commission today on budget matters, is anyone here wishing to address the commission on the issue of sewer district number two budget as now pending before the commission? Hearing none, any further discussion from the board? We'll do it by roll call vote. Commissioner Oates?
Aye.
Commissioner Baskey?
Aye.
Commissioner German?
Aye.
Commissioner Jones?
Aye.
Chair, aye. Motion carries. Continue, Mr. Meeger.
The next item is sewer district number three, public hearing. The Board of County Commissioners is asked to adopt the 2026 budget for sewer district number three. The budget certificate page summarizes the maximum levy of property tax for specific funds and the maximum expenditure for all funds for the district's budget. So this is to conduct a hearing to hear questions, concerns, and comments from the public related to the 2026 budget. Consider the adoption, and consider the adoption of the 2026 budget. The 2026 budget certificate was prepared using the notice of hearing for the 2026 budget expenditures. Sewer district number three will not exceed the revenue neutral rate of four point nine eight oh. The alternatives would be to adopt sewer district number three, 2026 proposed budget as presented with mill levy rate of four point nine eight oh and a maximum expenditures of three hundred and thirteen thousand, three hundred sixty-six dollars. The second alternative would be to adopt the sewer district number three, 2026 proposed budget that differs from the one presented. However, Kansas statutes prohibit changes that would raise the district's total mill levy above the amount published in the notice of public hearing. Staff recommends alternative one to adopt the proposed budget as presented with a mill levy rate of four point nine eight oh and maximum expenditures of three, three hundred thirteen thousand, three hundred sixty-six dollars.
Questions from the commission? Motion, please?
I would so move that we accept alternative one.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded by Commissioner Oates to adopt sewer district number three, 2026 budget as presented with a mill levy rate of four point nine eight zero and match, maximum expenditures of three hundred thirteen thousand, three sixty-six. We will now give the public an opportunity to address the pending motion before the commission with regard to sewer district number three, 2026 budget. Is there anyone here that wishes to address the commission? Hearing none, then is there any further comments by the commission? Roll call vote. Commissioner Oates?
Aye.
Commissioner Baskey?
Aye.
Mr. German?
Aye.
Commissioner Jones?
Aye.
Chair, aye. Motion carries. Down to the 2025 vehicle and equipment auction.
Good morning. Larry Grongart, interim Public Works Coordinator. This morning, the Board of County Commissioners is asked to consider and approve the list of vehicles and equipment to list for auction for 2025. The interim county administrator, elected officials, and department heads have reviewed their respective inventories and have determined that there is a need to hold a 2025 Fannie County auction for vehicles and equipment. On June twentieth, 2022, the Board of County Commissioners adopted Resolution thirty-one dash twenty twenty-two, establishing policy and procedures for the disposition of surplus property. In accordance with Resolution thirty-one dash twenty-two, the following procedure has occurred for the 2025 vehicle and equipment auction. Number one, each elected official, department head, or designee for either has determined whether property assigned to their department is deemed as surplus. Number two, the interim county administrator has ensured that the property declared a surplus by the department is made available to other county departments. Three, the surplus property has been deemed as not desirable by other county departments. And four, the approximate value has been determined for each item and is shown on the attached auction item list. Number five, the interim county administrator has determined that the most efficient and economical method of, to maximize returns will be to offer the property through the auction on the Gavel Roads online auction website. In accordance with KSA nineteen dash twenty-one B, the Board of County Commissioners by unanimous vote may sell or dispose of property that is no longer required and has a value not to exceed fifty thousand dollars. If approved, notice of the board's intent to dispose of such property shall be published at least two times in the official county newspaper. Such notice shall include the time, place, and conditions of such sale or disposition. The alternatives are, number one, the Board of County Commissioners may approve the list of items for the 2025 Fannie County auction for vehicles and equipment and authorize the interim county administrator to sign the contract with Gavel Roads online auction. Alternative number two, the Board of County Commissioners may not approve the list of items for the 2025 Fannie County auction for vehicles and equipment and provide staff with further direction. Staff recommends alternative number one, approve the list of items for the 2025 Fannie County auction for vehicles and equipment and authorize the interim county administrator to sign the contract with Gavel Roads online auction.
If I read this correctly, under the law, whenever it is required that a board of county commissioners approve a sale or disposition of property by unanimous vote, and a county has a five-member board, such board may approve a sale or disposition of property by a four-fifth majority. Madam Counselor, do you agree with that? It's on page eighty. It's nineteen two eleven, subsection DF.
Ask a question, we'll.
Sure.
You have value on vehicles, but not on any of the, I mean, heavy equipment?
Correct, yeah. We couldn't, we were unable to determine the value on those, yeah.
Just curious. Now, this, Gavel Roads, gravel roads?
Gavel Roads, yes.
You've used them before?
We have used them before, had a good history with them. They also were the one that offered to sell, there's not a seller fee, there's just a buyer fee, so that they waived that seller fee that.
Buyer fee, really?
Yes. Correct, McKenzie?
I wondered why there was zero percent commission, so that gets charged to the buyer.
Right.
Okay.
F does read that it's a four-fifths majority, yes.
All right, so one of you don't get to have the power of revocation of the resolution, but it does require a supermajority, four-fifths vote.
I would so move that we approve alternative number one.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve alternative number one for the disposition of the county property. Since the statute requires a clear indication of vote, we'll do it by roll call vote. Is there any further discussion?
One more question.
Yes, sir.
The on the one forty G cat, that's ours, you got listed here?
Yeah, yeah, and that's one that we've actually have parted out over the years. There's, it's been, yeah.
No, it's not.
It's not a complete, yeah, right.
Okay. Anything else? Commissioner Oates?
Aye.
Commissioner Baskey?
Aye.
Commissioner German?
Aye.
Commissioner Jones?
Aye.
Chair, aye. Motion carries with the required majority. How about unanimous?
Thank you.
Thank you. Finally, on our business agenda this morning, we have the purchase of a new ambulance, and we'll hear from Kenny Smith, Emergency Medical Services Director.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kenny Smith, Director of EMS here at Fannie County. The governing body is asked to consider and approve the purchase of a new ambulance. A little bit of background, we have a fleet of six ambulances with three admin vehicles. With everyday calls for service and normal wear and tear on them, there's always a rotation that needs to be done. Every year, our budget allocates two hundred and seventy-five thousand for the purchase of a new ambulance with that, and then the funds in the equipment reserve. I would like to start the purchasing process of acquiring a new ambulance. Currently, if we order an ambulance today, delivery date will not be until mid twenty-seven to mid twenty-eight, depending on the company that is used. These alternatives before you all consist of one Ford F-550 four-by-four chassis with an ambulance box on the back. Alternative one, approve the purchase of the Osage model ambulance for the purchase price of three twenty-one two ten. Alternative number two, approve the purchase price of the Lifeline model ambulance for the purchase price of three forty-one one twenty-four. Alternative number three, approve the purchase of the Medics model ambulance for the purchase price of three fifty-six four seventy-seven. And then, alternative number four, not approve any of the, any of the alternatives and give direction. Recommendation from the staff for the governing body is to approve alternative number one, approve the purchase of the Osage model ambulance for the purchase price of three hundred and twenty-one thousand, two hundred and ten dollars. Fiscal impact, with the budget already allocated for two hundred and seventy-five thousand per year for an ambulance, the equipment reserve fund having over seven hundred thousand, the overall impact of the purchase is relatively low due to the planning that has been done.
Questions, Commissioner?
I have a couple. So it looked to me like Osage not only had the best bid, but the best presentation. They were a little more thoughtful in what they presented, potentially could be a 2027 or a 2028. And I just wanted to point out, if it is a 2028 model that we end up going with, it will be a little more money.
Yes.
But still, you know, reasonable, I think.
Yeah, and those are just kind of the differences between the both chassis, and so I just went with the 2027 chassis on that little bit that they gave us a little bit of, a little bit more insight on their builds, so.
Sir?
Question, two of the units were diesel and the Osage evidently is gas?
Oh, that's a good question. I honestly did not look into that as far as, I would have assumed this is a diesel purchase.
Okay, well, I'm pretty sure the other two mentioned it or.
Oh, the other two?
Yes.
Oh, no, the Medics is a diesel, and the Lifeline is a diesel as well.
Yeah, and the Osage, I didn't. Yeah, and the Osage, I didn't, I looked at it, but I didn't see it listed.
And I just took off the first paper. I can look into it. I would assume that it's a diesel, but I can definitely look into that. My intent is for it to be a diesel.
So, you've had good luck with them lately?
Yes. So, the, all of our ambulances right now are Osages, all six of them. We just got a new remount, I believe, two years ago, year and a half ago, that has a new chassis, that's a diesel chassis, and we've had good luck with them, yes.
Okay. Well, I know in the past, we'd had some problems with the diesels, and getting them fixed was expensive.
Yeah. Anything diesel is expensive.
Also, another question while you, this isn't related to this, but I noticed I got a deal where you were getting service on your vehicles done at one of the auto places here in town and not at the
A lot of that had to deal with the...
Oil change.
Yeah, but if it served under the warranty, then we just kind of stuck with that. And in the years past, we've used, oh, Jared Seba out at...
I think this was with, I'd have to look at, find the statement, but it's for two units, just oil change. But one was your Expedition and another one I didn't.
Okay.
But I thought that, those type of units, I would think that they could do it down at the shop cheaper than...
I'll look into that. Thank you.
Anything else, Commissioners? Questions over here? All right. My question for the administrator is, we obviously have the funds budgeted for the expenditure. When will we actually pay this money?
Well, typically, they, I haven't seen the agreements, but typically, you pay a chassis fee upfront.
A lot of this should be on delivery.
Oh, just on delivery, okay. My experience is in the past is sometimes they require a certain amount upfront to cover the chassis. Then, but apparently, in this particular case, it'll all be done once the delivery is, once it's delivered.
So, we're authorizing the expenditure, but we're not actually paying it out of pocket?
Not paying it out until it's delivered.
Okay. We'll make sure that we pass that along to the new administrator that we've got substantial diminution of our equipment reserve funds for EMS.
Will do.
One more question. If we approve alternative number one, should we give a range or simply the 321 to 10?
Well, I think you'd want to have enough to make sure that it's covered, and do you have a...
I know that the agreement would be set at the 321 per their system. I know that that's what it'll be. So, there's not a lot of flux. As far as when we say go, then that's when that is kind of rubber stamped.
I think the only change would occur, I think the only change would occur if there'd be something, you know, added later on, which we don't anticipate that. They would have, that would come back to you for consideration.
But if we do end up, excuse me, getting the 2028, would we need to come back and approve that additional amount, or this, it would be okay just as presented?
Well, I think, I think what I'm hearing is that the amount that they're, they're asking for in their proposal would cover a 2028.
It's just the 2027.
The 2027.
So, on, and I can give this to you.
If that was the case, then you're correct, Commissioner. They would need to come back and, and, and for the additional amount.
Okay.
If there would be an additional fee, but they would come, make sure that we have, you know, funds to cover that and make sure it's been approved for the auditors.
How is it determined whether we get the 2027 or the 2028?
Once we tell them a go, then that's when it'll be set.
Okay.
So, what they did basically is to show the difference between the two chassis. Whatever we decide to go with is kind of whatever we decide to go with.
Oh, gotcha. Okay. That makes sense. So, it's not like you're on a waiting list?
No. Well, on a waiting list, yes, but it's a rubber stamp type of deal. So, it's, you're on the waiting list, ready to get billed, but then you're going to get what has been presented or what is approved.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? Let's buy an ambulance. Motion?
I'll move that we approve alternative number one, purchase of an Osage Model Ambulance for the purchase price of $321,210.
Sir, second?
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve alternative number one, as stated in the motion. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Most, motion carries. Right. We're going to take a short break, and we'll reconvene at 10 till 10.
To order, next on our agenda, are staff reports and we will hear from Mackenzie Phillips.
Good morning again Chairman and County Commissioners. I have a few updates for you this morning. The first is on Spear Acres and if you could go to the map for Spear Acres, that would be awesome. So, talking with, I talked with the developer for this property last week and they are actually, they were originally intending to do public infrastructure through this property. So if you look at the map, that south connection to, uh, South, or Old 83 there, that is only forty feet wide. So that was their primary entrance into the, the development. So, a couple of years ago, they did come before the Board of County Commissioners to open that as a public road and it was denied because it does not meet the minimum, minimum width of a county right-of-way, which is sixty feet. So they've been working on that property just to the north of that entrance of trying to gain an additional twenty foot so that they can have that as public infrastructure. They, they were under contract, it seemed like, or negotiations on getting that piece of land. Well, that fell through. So they are not going to be getting that additional twenty feet to the north. So due to that, they are actually going to be going back to private infrastructure. They're not going to be dedicating it as public infrastructure. So that also makes them ineligible for RHID funding, so they will not be going forward with RHID funding. So when they do construct all of this, it'll be private road infrastructure and private drainage and stormwater systems. So, um, we will have more information about that soon. They will have to go back to the Planning Commission to have the plots re-approved. Those plots were approved, or the preliminary plot was approved and the final plot was recommended for approval. So, we, like I said, I'll have updates for you here in the next couple of meetings. So, the other update I have, or, uh, point of discussion, I guess I have for you this morning. I, we have been looking at other funding opportunities for our Millen overlay programs, our asphalt maintenance programs, and we are looking at right now at the possibility of applying for cost share funding through the Kansas Department of Transportation. They do this a couple of different times a year and this, this fall 2025 round, they do have six million available. This is a program that provides financial assistance to local entities for construction projects that improve safety, leverage state funds to increase total transportation investment and help both rural and urban areas of the state to improve the transportation system. So, um, there, we have on the budget that you just approved for 2026 to do, uh, it's a planned, we budgeted for a quarter, a quarter of Big Low Road to be, have a Millen overlay plus to take a quarter of it out of the Special Highway Fund. Well, we also have Anderson Road and Jones Avenue that were used a couple of years ago for a detour by, by KDOT to detour all of the traffic from the bypass. So, uh, we've been meaning to do a Millen overlay of that. We did receive some funding from the, from KDOT to do a Millen overlay of that, but it was nowhere near the amount that we would need to, to complete that. Anderson Road is in need. It's almost as bad as Big Low Road is right now and it really is in dire need of a Millen overlay. So, um, with this application for cost share funding, we're looking at doing, um, the Millen overlay of Anderson Road and then a Millen overlay of Jones Avenue only within the city limits of Holcomb. So, and then we would also, if there's a little bit available, we would be applying for the additional funding that was, um, not actually budgeted for, for, um, the half of Big Low Road. So with that, we would, um, we wanted to ask the Board of County Commissioners if you could authorize the Chairman to write a letter of support for that cost share application.
Motion for that?
Sure do.
I would move that we authorize the Chairman to sign.
Second. Moved and seconded, authorizing the Chair to sign a cost share application in conjunction with a grant?
It, it's the cost share, it's the cost share program. It's not necessarily grant funding, but it's funding provided by the, the state.
Cost share application to the state of Kansas, correct?
Yes, and this will be a letter of support.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mackenzie?
Thank you. We'll get something prepared for you.
Mackenzie, I have a question for you.
Yes.
On the Spear Acres, was there no other alternative for them?
For public infrastructure? Uh, no, without having that minimum, um, right-of-way.
I hate that they have to give up the RHID. Um, there's no other location where they could do it?
No, if you pull up that map again, you can pull.
Have they thought about trying to contact the property owner to the south?
Well, that wouldn't help with this particular.
Yeah, there's not much, if you look, there's not really that much room on the south side. Can you scroll down just a little bit, please? You see that building right there? It, it's pretty close. That would be within their building setback as well. So it would make that property non-conforming. Um, the area that they would have is there to the north. The only way, I mean, if, the County Commission can waive that, but it, as I mentioned, it was before the County, Board of County Commissioners, a couple of years ago, it was denied.
I remember we had long discussion over this.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Mr. Mager, you don't have to get up for your report.
Just want to mention a couple of things. First of all, the joint city-county meeting on September 16th at 11:00 a.m. and that'll be at the City Administration Building. Then also, just to let you know that the VRF program, or, uh, construction has begun. They're working right now and all the buildings getting, or at all the sites, uh, getting some preparatory work done. You know, setting pads for, you know, the, the new, um, equipment and various things. So they are, uh, work both, both projects. There's Project A, Project B. They're working on all those buildings at, at this time. So we'll be able to provide you with a little bit more progress as we get a little farther along, but I just want to let you know that construction has started on that.
That's great news.
Anything else, sir?
No, no, sir.
All right, very good. Madam Clerk, is there any, uh, upcoming meetings or events that need to draw our attention, other than the voter deadline for registration is October 14th?
Yeah, I did add the election-related dates that are coming up.
Thank you. All right, without any additions to the board governance, we'll go to Commissioners' reporters. We'll start with Senior.
Mr. Chairman, I have nothing to, um, report. With the advent of the holiday, a lot of them were moved.
Very good, thank you. Mr. Gorman?
I attended the Red Dog Children's Museum fundraiser. That was a, an excellent event and I am so excited for the things that they're doing. I think that's, um, a needed entity in our community. I attended the Chamber Breakfast, uh, which was presented by Deb Euler of United Way. Really good presentation. Um, that's definitely a worthwhile entity and they are having a raffle. So, you know, get your raffle tickets from Deb. Some pretty good prizes there. I also attended the Planning Commission. Um, I and Kevin, uh, presented to the Zoolanders. It's a women's coffee group, um, the Sales Tax Initiative. I also attended the Livewell Annual Meeting Luncheon, uh, which was really good and very well-presented. Finney County Economic Development Board Meeting. Lots of exciting things going on there. Very thankful to Lana and her team. Also, uh, the Library Board Meeting was canceled due to the heat in the facility and, um, so we're definitely looking forward to getting that addressed. I do want to point out, and I did give handouts to all the Commissioners, they've worked really hard to come up with alternative sites, um, to have some of their programs and events in the event that they're not able to do that during the construction phase. Um, they're, they've talked about may, potentially even closing down the library for a couple of weeks if necessary, simply because it'd be difficult to get children to comply with, "Don't go across the construction tape." Or, or whatever. So, um, I did hand that out. You, you can all have a copy of that. I think it would be good also to post that on our website. And that's all I have.
All right, Commissioner Bassett?
I don't have any new, uh, information to report.
All right, very good. Looking forward to your analysis with Raftellus, Scan and Wade City. All right, Commissioner Oates?
Busy last couple of weeks. Uh, I attended the Great Plains Development Board Meeting. They're working on a lot of loans and projects. I too, uh, attended the Chamber Breakfast and it was a great presentation on the United Way. Uh, this is a great opportunity for us and others to invest in our community and I would encourage those to get, get involved. I also attended the Livewell 25th Anniversary, uh, along with, uh, Commissioner Gorman. Uh, it was a great, uh, presentation, great networking. Congrats to Livewell, um, meeting their 25th anniversary and hoping for another 25 years with Cali Dyer and St. Catherine Hospital being, uh, strong supporters. Attended the Law Enforcement Center Jail Meeting. We're really working hard on getting the marketing out there. We're putting together some cards. I think Cheyenne's involved with that. Getting cards with information and on the back of it will have the resolution on there. I would ask that, uh, our Commission be prepared to, um, speak at, um, any events and if you have thoughts on locations, uh, places to be, uh, presentations, reach out to, uh, Cheyenne and Leanne and let them know. This would include if there's, uh, for example, the fair or something like that where we can set up a informational booth, uh, to let the public know. And finally, I attend, I was invited by Senator Moran's office to attend a law enforcement roundtable meeting last week. This was with our local and law enforcement in southwest Kansas and our federal and state partners on ways we can work together, uh, to curb the, uh, drug issues that we're facing in, uh, in Kansas. Sheriff Martinez attended and Representative Finney County well, as, in that meeting as well.
Thank you. The Chair's update is, uh, I attended, uh, a lot of presentations to give information on the half-cent sales tax vote coming up on November 4th. Thank you for the reminder.
With regard to my duties on Compass's board, uh, Compass has now 329 employees. It, uh, certification was renewed for a CCHBC designation. One of the peer support programs that, uh, Compass now has available is a jail reintegration peer support program here in our Finney County Jail, which the Sheriff supports and allows the appropriate, uh, personnel to conduct meetings inside the jail for mental health services. Also, these people are providing, uh, life skills, anger management, positive reinforcement, AA, NACO meetings, all inside the jail facility, all to improve the mental health of persons who have incorrectly chosen a, an event in their life and hopefully that we can provide mental health services to people who may need it. The new proposed jail, uh, is something that Compass is really, really excited about for all of southwest Kansas because of inmates that are in crisis will have, uh, better facility and better opportunity for treatment. And Sheriff Martinez is very supportive of this continuing effort to improve mental health services. We, uh, continue to have a real problem in southwest Kansas of getting someone to Larned State Hospital who's in crisis. There's eighty-nine on the waiting list at Larned State Hospital. Special Committee on Special Legislative Review, uh, was, uh, part of the Executive Director's opportunity to explain to folks that it's a hundred miles to Larned. That for people in Elkhart, it's a hundred, two-hundred and five miles. There is no plan in the state's picture to improve, uh, mental health services to southwest Kansas. So folks, we're going to have to do it ourselves. And Compass, uh, of course, is one of our outside agencies and has a taxing, uh, support from the taxpayers. But September is Suicide Awareness Month, Prevention Month and all Camp, Compass locations will be hosting events and special activities. Please see their website for, uh, making sure that the public is informed that we're doing what we can to assist, uh, Compass to promote this awareness. It's a common problem here in southwest Kansas. As, uh, one of the agribusiness ladies on the board provided that the regional bank is predicting that a lot of our agricultural folks with price commodities depressed will have a zero rate of return this year on their services. This puts considerable stress on our environment here in southwest Kansas. Be aware and be part of the, be a part of the solution and not part of the problem. Don't stick our heads in the mud and reach out for help and Compass is there to provide it. Member Compass with the CCHBC designation now has next day, or same-day service and for people in crisis, twenty-four seven, seven days a week, three-hundred and sixty-five days a year. It's a huge, huge opportunity for us to be able to do that. Suicide prevention efforts are not just limited to Garden City. There's program analysis for both, uh, Grant County, Dodge City and Scott City because Compass is a regional mental health center. So please take opportunities to do that if it's outside of Garden City. We have, uh, some really good news to share with people and I'm calling on the Vice Chairman to report it, but we had a special town hall meeting here with the people involved with regard to, uh, encampments and homeless issues in the county. And Madam Vice Chair, would you, uh, care to report, uh, how the community has come together to help care for those people?
Absolutely, I'd be happy to. I've had a couple of meetings so far, um, addressing the challenges with, um, we'll call them unauthorized encampments, which leads to, and we are working on that. That's on a legislative, um, answer to that. However, that's going to take time. Uh, that's not going to happen probably until the spring if we can get that passed. But definitely wanted this to be a community effort and so I have, um, pulled together, um, members of law enforcement, a lot of our agencies, uh, that can help folks who are having difficulties and they have been reaching out. We were able to, um, get some drone footage of the, um, encampments that are in the riverbed so that we can know where they are because there's, you know, at this time of year, there's a lot of vegetation there. It made it difficult for our folks to outreach and, so we received that, got that distributed. They formed committees to go out and visit with the folks, uh, in those encampments and have had a pretty significant amount of success with their initial efforts. So I'm going to be, um, calling another meeting of anybody who's interested. I'll reach out to the, uh, people who attended before, but certainly if anybody from the public is interested in helping with this, we would take all the help we can get. I did get a call from a gentleman who's, has access to equipment and has offered to, uh, pull groups together. There's, I guess there's groups that do four-wheeling in the riverbed and they would be happy to come together to try to do some kind of a cleanup. Now, the cleanup, uh, is going to involve more than just the encampments and I know that, um, Sagebrush Estates HOA has done that in the past where they bring in, um, a big trash container and they volunteer. So I did connect, um, their HOA with this gentleman who had volunteered and hopefully we can get a cleanup operation scheduled. It won't, of course, involve the encampments, but I guess between here, even in Dodge City, according to this gentleman who offered to help, there's a significant amount of trash. So I think it would be good for us to participate in that and I'll have information once that comes about. Might be good to, uh, pitch in and help with that if you're able.
Right, thank you for that wonderful report and I would applaud the various members of the Coalition that are helping with homelessness and the encampments issue. Their attention to this detail and your leadership, Vice Chairman, is really appreciated. The solution is, is, as you know, a community-based response and thus far, uh, the folks have been really receptive to community help and assistance and trying to alleviate homelessness in our community. We don't need somebody from Washington tell us how to address this issue. Very proud of that issue. Uh, I don't have anything else for the Commission this morning. Commissioners, do you have anything else before we adjourn?
We do have one further agenda item on there.
Why, I've already thrown that away. What do we have?
We have an executive session on there.
Oh my goodness. How could I have overlooked that?
I know.
What is the need?
For attorney-client matters.
And persons?
We will need, uh, the Commission, myself and, um, Mr. Mager.
And for how long?
Uh, let's do twenty minutes.
Motion for executive session when the person's identified.
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded, going to executive session. Of attorney-client privilege with the persons identified. Any further discussion? For twenty minutes, correct? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're in executive session for twenty.
Post, we're in executive session for twenty. Second. Moved and seconded out of executive session without discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post, back in regular session. I'll confirm that no action was taken in an executive session now that my mic is now giving us the reverb. Got the hot mic syndrome going. I'm very cheerful and glad that we're ready for a motion to adjourn. Is there any other business before the county commission? Motion to adjourn, Vice Chairman?
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Second.
Been moved and seconded by Commissioner Jones, Senior, to adjourn. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post, we are adjourned. Thank you.